Heyo!
Maybe he's like the guy that hit on you, Dr. Raffi.
Ha 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 ha!
Hehe.
Have we started? Whoops, I probably better be quiet.
Oh, I didn't hear anything start.
Oh, okay!
I didn't think all the councillors were here. Some empty chairs.
It's not like everybody's talking. I'm really there eating popcorn. Yeah? Hi. Yeah, you don't know? Hehehe. Sorry, we don't have some further. We gotta get that skin tan going on again.
Ooh.
Yeah?
Ah, I can't really tan though, I burn easily.
Oh, it's alright, I've got some good ointment that we can use on your skin.
Ooh.
Yeah?
Did you make it yourself?
Um... Hey Cypo, where'd you get this skin tan lotion from?
Ew, Cypo got it? I don't want it.
Oh, bear with me.
Aw, man.
Asking for both?
Alright, I bring the order to see council meeting dated eleven four nineteen eighty-five. Uh, to order. Uh, first order of business is we're gonna go over the election results for the winners. Uh, give me one second. Alright, so I have Jason Winters, um, with one hundred votes, uh, retaining his city council seat. So congratulations, Jason Winters. Uh, Mr. Boblin garnering ninety-three volts, ninety-three votes. Uh, congratulations, Boblin, you are retaining your seats. Um, the two new in- seats will go to Ms. Pascal and Mr. Sicard. So if you guys are out in the audience now, feel free to come up and say "Thank you" to the council.
Hey, I voted for him!
Mm-hmm.
Aw, I can't hear, is that just me?
They're rather quiet.
They guys might something?
But, uh, we will, we will act on each other.
Chase, we're gonna shout.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, he is shouting, sorry.
Thank you!
Oh wow.
Well, they move on.
Congratulations, doctor.
I'm done.
Alright, so, congratulations to the, uh, ones that retain their seats and the ones that, uh, won the seat for council.
Hell yeah, it's called one for team doctor.
The next, uh, order of business will be going around each council member from my right to left, and, uh, each council member will stand up and, uh, present. They're gonna be-.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Oh, pledge of allegiance, alright, alright, fair enough. You gonna lead us?
Oh.
Always, alright.
Alright, I guess I can.
Yeah, you are.
Do I have to, if I'm not American? He's a flag over there!
Yeah, you're in America.
But I'm not American.
You're here.
What if I'm just working in a rock?
Everybody, please rise for the pledge of allegiance of America.
I'm from China.
Oh yeah, sorry.
You're a commie.
Heh, I pledge allegiance to the flag! And the public for which it stands!
Sand!
One nation! With liberty and justice for all!
Justice for all!
That was the original one.
Yep.
That is another one?
Thumbs up, thumbs up.
The current one. Thumbs up for America.
Thumbs up for America, citizen.
Yep, that was the original one, gotta keep you on your toes.
Hehehe!
I don't need the lyrics to this song.
That was musical Boblin, thank you.
Alright, starting on council member Ashley Williams. I should probably actually shout. Um, this should be a very quick, uh, act. It's, um, the Business Revenue Relocation Act. Uh, the- the short version of this is, uh, we're gonna allocate the Business and Revenue Bureau underneath, instead of right now, it's currently underneath, um, the role of the mayor. Uh, he can appoint my position. Uh, we would shift this to be under the Chief Justice. So this would not be a political appointment any longer, so a new mayor wouldn't be able to just put whoever they want in this position. It would be based off of the justices' choices of putting this in their same sort of position as like the Attorney General. Um, that's a summary of the act, I can go and read off the specific, uh, amendments that we wanna do with the Constitution that kind of make this happen. Uh, or if the council members want me to, I can go over that. It's not too long, but, um, uh, I'll leave that to the council members. Uh, council members, you can. I can read the amendments if you want. Okay, um, so this will be amending, uh, section two, uh, part C and section two, part D of the SCA, so that's the, um, or sorry, the BCA, the, uh, Business, um, uh, Act, the Business Compliance Act of nineteen eighty-five. Uh, so the eligibility for the Director of the Bureau, uh, will be denoted as "Any citizen of the state of Lo- of Se- uh, San Andreas, otherwise eligible to hold a public office, with an active and valid bar license, may hold the position of Director of Business Revenue Bureau." Section two D shall be amended as the following, this is the appointment clause. "The Director of the Business and Revenue Bureau shall be appointed by the Chief Justice of Los Santos. The Director of the Business Revenue Bureau shall be appointed a minimum of thirty days, with no need for reappointment." Basically means, if the Chief Justice, so chooses, he can replace the, uh, Director, uh, as he sees fit, uh, with thirty-two days of vacation. And that's basically, that's it, it's just two amendments to, uh, uh, the BCA. Alright, so any questions from council members? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public?
Love that.
Alright, well, if I don't have any questions, and the council members don't have any questions, do you guys, uh, think you guys have enough information? I know the two new members don't have access to the bill just yet. Um, do council members think that they have enough information to vote? If not, we can table it.
Aye aye, captain.
Aye, as in you are able to vote on this?
Yeah, sure.
I'm able to vote on this as well, I've been briefed prior.
Alright, well, if the council members feel like they, uh, could put a vote down, let's, uh, go ahead and get this official. Alright, those all in favor of the bill presented by Ashley Williams? Please raise your hand.
I'm trying to raise my hand, it won't let me.
Alright, well, um, I'm voting for sixteen, so let the record show that it was passed by unanimous decision. Congratulations, Ashley, this is your first bill to get passed.
Yep, thank you, sir, uh, and that is all I have for the council this week.
Alright. And our newest council member. Go ahead and introduce yourself and introduce some bills you have, uh, working on or anything.
Uh, Royal and Sicard, I do not have any bills to present at this time, thank you.
Alright. Appreciate you. Moving along.
Oh shit.
Mr. Boblin.
Yeah, right, I have four things to present today.
Four things, alright.
Yeah, quick question, quick question.
Yes, he's still sitting on the council, it's just absence.
Thanks then, four things.
Yeah, um, whether or not we bring up that issue again, 'cause he's not here, we'll have to decide, but just go down your list and move through.
Okay. I have the, uh, People of Sovereignty Act, the POS, that will, uh, help with petition signing for civilians, to allow them to get easier access to contacting the federal government and trying to improve the community. I have, I have the Paralegal Act of nineteen eighty-five, which, uh, was going to be advocating for raised wages for paralegals. However, that already happened, so it's been slightly reviewed and changed to, uh, try and prepare for the upcoming, uh, pilot license school thing. I also have the Stop and Go Act of nineteen eighty-five, and then the impeachment papers that were mentioned last week and tabled.
Alright, let's start with the first one.
Very well. The People of Sovereignty Act, the POS of nineteen eighty-five, is, uh, trying to get the allowance of individuals to present for unsigned or unprepared petition to city council. The city council, if they choose, may support or endorse certain petitions at their own discretion. Endorsed petitions will then be posted or provided somewhere in City Hall, where individuals can add their signatures to the petitions at their discretion. This way, the people and city council can work together as a community to rally support for ideas and petitions that the council deems worthy of both support and merit. Giving away for civilians that struggle with getting signatures, support so that they can present a city council endorsed petition to the federal government. This way, the city council has a hand in showing their support of civilian activity and requests to the feds. This will strengthen the ability for civilians to be heard, to support each other, and perhaps have more impact when pre- when presented to the federal government.
Alright, does anyone in the council have any questions for this act?
Uh, yeah, I got one, uh, Mr. King. Um, so, what, uh, stops a citizen from coming to you, or any council member specifically, to get an act raised on, basically, so we can vote on it directly, as opposed to having them go through petitions?
Nothing stops that at all, but this way, if a individual or civilian in the city does not have access to a council member, or is unable to reach them, or unable to come to an agreement, they could present it to us as a whole, as a uni- unified council, and then together, we can deem if we wish to endorse the petition or not, to then place it in City Hall so that it can be signed by people should they choose to when they come here, as a way to rally support.
Oh, that clarifies everything, I love that, yeah, uh, thank you, sir.
Perfect.
I think my only question on this was to King, would the, uh, how do we, how do we determine which ones are worthy of support and merit?
Well, I was assuming that it would be put to-
Some sort of requirements, or?
I would assume it would be put to a vote amongst all council members, and if all council members agree upon it having merit, then it would be deemed, uh, supported by city council.
Just wonder if there should be some, some minimal requirements, just, just so we don't end up with a situation where city council is, is effectively approving or vetoing things, and people, like, get upset. The council doesn't support it.
Oh, sorry, one sec, I, there's a lot of noise outside.
God damn it.
Yeah. People fault the infrastructure again.
What the hell, man?
Alright, I can hear you now.
Alright, erase the texts. Yeah. But you know, you know what I mean, like, i- i- if somebody presents something and the council shoots it down, they're gonna feel a little, a little distraught about it, and it might just be that, quite frankly, the idea is just not well fleshed out enough.
Well, perhaps then, they can, uh, we can advise them on why we've denied it, and they can, uh, try to improve their ideology before presenting it again, or giving it to the public.
Okay. Uh, my question's kind of in line with that, so this would, would this negate the actual official vote that one bill or act is presented to the, to the council?
So do you mean, once they have a, uh, signed petition, are you saying it would negate that?
Yeah, I'm asking if we, if, if that would negate the votes later that would be required for the bill.
Completely different. This is just to decide as a council if we choose to endorse a petition, to help it get support from civilians in the city. It would then obviously have to be presented once it gets the, uh, quantifiable sixty-five votes in POS. This is a completely separate thing, just to help people, uh, get their petition signed and, and help support good ideas in the community.
Okay.
I have a point of clarification.
Go ahead.
Get across the finish line, right?
Yes, exactly, Mr. Capahudo.
Would it require unanimous approval, so unanimous vote for it to be approved, or is it a simple majority?
I think simple majority would make sense to me.
Any other questions in the council?
Would we be, uh, like, we need a, uh, majority, right? Would this be during, uh, sta- typical city council meetings, or would this be kind of like a special, special get-together to talk about these petitions?
I was assuming this would be during council meetings, we could throw it into the end, uh, when we give a forum to the people. If they have a petition, they'd like to rally support from the council from when it's presented at that time.
Gotcha.
So kinda similar to what we were already doing, just with a little bit more tape to try and help, uh, assist the civilians.
Alright. Any more questions from the council, or turn over to the public? Huh? Alright, any questions from the public on, uh, the bill with Mr. Boblin?
Dina.
Please, uh, come up to the podium and state your name.
Sit at the back.
You can line up to the, line up behind the podium as well.
Hello, civilian.
Hi, my name's Niall.
Yes, hello, Niall.
I have a question. Uh, what's to stop, uh, council members from taking bribes to endorse a petition?
Well, we have checks and balances, isn't it, that we could vote a council member? Vote with no confidence?
Yes, if a council member was found to be doing that, I'm certain that we would immediately vote of no confidence them and remove them from the council.
Well, Cat's sitting up there, so I guess she got voted in.
So found.
What'd you say?
I said so found.
I didn't even think of that.
I don't understand, sir.
I don't know.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm sorry, sorry.
No? Alright.
I don't know.
So, do council members feel like they have enough information to sit this for a vote?
Didn't the vote close yesterday?
Yeah, we had a vote.
Was it today?
Yep.
Yeah. Oh.
Alright, so let's move this to vote, um, voted on Boblin's, uh, what was the abbreviation for the bill?
It was the, uh, POS, People of Sovereignty.
POS Act.
Yes.
Alright, all those in favor of the POS Act, can raise your hand.
Love that.
Voting for it, so let the record show that it was a unanimous decision to vote in your act. It's better than the other name.
Beautiful, yeah.
Agreed.
Formerly known as WAP, W-A-P.
WAP bill, okay. Interesting, alright.
It's been changed, to Mr. Caputo's, uh, requirements.
Hmm.
Alright, alright. Good, you're next, Bill. Couldn't have a good conscious voter for that one. Yeah, no, 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 that's a good call.
Alright, next one? Let's do the Stop and Go Act of nineteen eighty-five, I think this one's very important. Due to the fact that the traffic lights are poorly designed in Los Santos, having to wait for traffic lights to turn green is only punishing to law-abiding citizens for following the law. The vast majority of traffic infrastructure is faulty and poorly maintained, which could potentially present danger and bad traffic jams, which it has historically in the past. As most people have probably noticed, at most intersections, you'll find that both sides of the traffic lights are red, and no cars are going, wasting everyone's time and punishing the law-abiding citizens due to poor engineering. The bill will amend the law from having to wait until the traffic light turns green to having to only stop for a minimum of five seconds, look both ways to ensure there's no oncoming traffic, and then proceed. Basically turning red lights to stop signs to a degree. If your light is green, you don't have to stop. If your light is red, you only need to stop for five seconds, check that there is no oncoming traffic to a reasonable degree, and give right-of-way to anyone with a green light.
I think, I thought everyone does that anyway.
This will clear up traffic jams, ultimately make the streets safer, and reward law-abiding citizens for their patience and virtue.
Alright, I'm gonna open the floor up to the people with this one first. Does anyone in the audience have any questions about this Stop and Go Act of nineteen eighty-five? Please come up to the podium if you have any questions.
Yeah?
Alright, ma'am?
Hello, I kept wondering, uh, uh, how it is probably proceed in terms of like law and like, you know, police, like, you know, monitoring this, 'cause it could all come down to like, you know, interpretation of how long someone might be, like, you know, proceeding, someone's waiting there.
Well, unfortunately, ma'am, some police already-
I'm gonna buy, you know that place that's up for auction, in Mary Park? That's next to the banjo strap?
At a stop, at a, uh, red light.
I'm gonna go for that at the auction.
They won't give me a ticket, and I've had other police officers tell me, if I do that, they'll still give me a ticket. So this would attempt to alleviate this, uh, individual questionality between police officers, and make it a standard for the civilians of Los Santos. As to what you say, which is a good point, I think that reasonably, a police officer shouldn't have to-
It's the one next to the banjo strap.
As long as the person is treating it like a stop sign.
Okay.
Thank you for your question, you're a pillar of the community.
Alright, sir.
So I was wondering, um, who would be held, uh, liable if there is any traffic accidents once this act to be brought in? Will that be City Hall, or?
City Hall be liable? Yeah, what do you mean?
I, I think that just like any traffic infraction, it would be the individuals in the traffic situation. Because you're, you would at a stop sign be held liable for hitting a car anyway. So, it's the same rules that would apply here.
Okay. Thank you.
So, let's say, um, let's say like, there was a real-
Yeah, can you speak up a little bit, sir?
Yeah, uh, sorry, uh.
Yeah, say with your chest.
Let's say, uh, let's say that like, there's an accident, and it's really bad, like, you know, someone died. You know, vehicular manslaughter, or whatever you wanna call it.
Yes.
Uh, and it was because of these, you know, these rules, uh, what would happen next?
Well, let me ask you this. If vehicular manslaughter occurred at a regular stop sign, where you have to stop, look both ways, and give right-of-way to an individual that has the right to go and continue, who would be held responsible? It'd be the individuals in the accident that caused the accident. I don't see how this would be any different than that.
Oh. Oh, okay, uh, thank you, uh.
Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, i- yes.
Very well, thank you, sir.
Yeah, tha- thank you.
Uh, my name is, uh-
Hello, Mr. Mohammed, yes.
Uh, yeah, my name is Mohammed, I'm a firefighter, I just wanted to commend you, Mr. Boblin, for this, uh, genius act, honestly. Very well worded, I love it, um, I wonder how you came up with it, honestly, I, uh, I'm very surprised. Yeah, no, you're very welcome, um, yeah, keep that, keep up the good work, I appreciate it.
And if this doesn't go through, then maybe it wasn't my idea, thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Anyone else?
No holds barred with Mr. King.
Any more questions in the council? Uh, do we have any police officers in the audience today?
Uh, we just had one that came up.
Hey, hey, quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Niall.
Hi, Niall.
Uh, can you tell me the statistics for car crashes at a stop sign versus a red light?
Uh, I don't have that, but I'm sure I could look that up for you.
Wouldn't that be a big factor to take into consideration before you consider this?
Uh, I think it could be, but I don't see how, let me ask you this. How many car crashes do you see in this city of Los Santos consistently because of stop signs? Have you ever seen one?
Yeah.
I have not, have you?
Yeah.
When both parties were stopping legally at the stop sign?
Yeah.
Well, I think that it would likely be just as common as it would be right now then. If you've seen a crash at a stop sign, if you've seen crashes at stoplights, this will also encourage individuals who just blaze through red lights to just give a couple seconds to stop, so that they don't hurt anyone, and continue.
Do police officers?
Sorry?
The police officers that all blaze through the lights? I don't think I've seen a cop stop once.
Oh, are they-
Well, police officers that aren't using their sirens would have to stop, yes.
Uh, they just flash their lights and going through.
I've seen police stop various times, which that's not what this act is about, yes, sir.
Okay.
I think it depends on the situation, where if, uh-
Yeah, I, I agree.
If cops are responding to a call, they'll, they'll, they'll drive through with lights on, otherwise they seem to stop normal.
Yeah, I, I agree, I've seen that many times.
If they don't have their sirens on, it's a cop, so.
I agree.
You can bring up to the, the chief or whoever the leading officer is. Um, go ahead, man, you have the floor.
Yeah, absolutely, um, I'd just like to say I fully support this bill, because I know personally, there have been many, many, many occasions where I've come to an intersection of four-way stop with stoplights. However, for whatever reason, the stoplights appear to be on the ground, or blown away entirely. Exactly, and it becomes extremely frustrating as a law-abiding citizen, because how am I supposed to responsibly determine if the light is green? And it, it becomes a very frequent domino effect, especially in high-traffic areas. So I for one especially support this bill.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Boblin, if I can say something?
Oh my.
Of course, Mr. Falco, go ahead.
Thank, thank, thank you. So, I, I like this bill, and, and, you know, I most likely will vote for it. I, I wanna just propose a change to some of, some of the wording, slightly. Um, so, because of the way that the, the traffic lights operate, under, in most jurisdictions around the country, um, it's what's known as an uncontrolled intersection. In an uncontrolled inter- intersection, you treat it as, you know, if it's a four-way intersection, it becomes a four-way stop. Basically, it's, it's as if there's no stop sign, or as if there's no traffic control de- device at all. Um, the, the, the proposal here i- is essentially just solidifying that. The, I, I, I suggest that we, we can do more with less words, just by saying, by declaring that the, that, um, at uncontrolled intersections, the, you know, the-
Stoplight should be treated as stop signs, perhaps.
And, um, and, and, and defining an uncontrolled intersection as a, you know, as a situation where, uh, you know, among other things, a situation where it's red and all direct.
Yes, yeah, I, I agree with that.
Yeah, so, yeah, and, and that, that, that's really just all I have to say out there.
Yeah, it's a good idea, yes, I agree with that rewording.
Perfect.
Alright, any more questions for the council? Have we checked to see if there will be any issues on the federal level, um, regarding this?
Uh, no, I haven't heard anything about that.
I believe, I, I believe that the judicial branch will be okay with it, 'cause it does line up with, with most law around the country.
Have we consulted with any of, uh, PD or any prosecutor that, uh, deals with the laws themselves?
No, I have not, but I'm happy to discuss that with them if we table it.
Um, I'm not saying we need to table it, I'm just curious. Um, obviously, you're gonna get support for this, because it's just a matter of, it's an issue.
It's just a serious infrastructure problem. Uh, it's not trying to eliminate stop signs, it's simply trying to cause them to be treated more like stop, or sorry, not eliminate stop lights, more so treat them like stop signs, uh, for the general state of mind of the civilians of Los Santos.
Okay, uh, any more council members have any questions on this? No? Uh, do the council members feel they have enough information on this act to vote for the Stop and Go Act?
I believe I do, you know, with the slight wording change.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Okay. So given the, given the verbiage change in the act, does the council- So given the given the verbiage change in the act, does the council uh feel like they have enough information to vote on this issue?
I do. Yeah.
Alright, so let's go ahead and move it to vote, those on favorite stop and go act of nineteen eighty-five, please raise your hands. I have.
Nope, I I'm not.
You're not voting uh for this, so one, two, three, four. That's how you kaput your hand is down?
Correct.
Uh so I have five, five votes for yes. That would leave what, three votes for no? I'm torn on the issue myself, um. I'm gonna vote for it. With the clause of we're gonna have to talk to the judiciary about this, um just because we don't know what effects it'll have on the. So. So where was that, is that eight, three?
Yes, sir.
Alright, let the record show the act passed and the vote of eight, three, um given the verbiage changes and a discussion with the judiciary. Alright, moving forward.
Okay, I have two more? Is that okay?
Yeah, we got uh.
And we get the next. Okay, the proposed formerly known as paralegal act of nineteen eighty-five. Uh this one has been revised because the paralegal stuff has already been passed with giving paralegals a raise. This more so addresses the upcoming airplane school stuff. Uh in eighteen fifty-two, in Carabba, Spain, sorry, in. Eight hundred fifty-two in Carabba, Spain, the Moorish man Armin Feirman attempted unsuccessfully. To fly by jumping from a tower while wearing a large cloak. It was recorded that there was, I I quote, there was enough air in the folds of his cloak to prevent great injury when he reached the ground. During the fourteen seventies in Renaissance Italy, schematics for early parachutes. Were recorded and further developed by Leonardo da Vinci himself, yet here in. Oh, I am, that's all very important, sir. Yet here in nineteen eighty-five, the great state of San Andreas has no such technology. To prevent death by gravity for citizens. This proposed bill is to provide a legal framework for locations where the use of federally approved parachutes. Are available for licensed or controlled purposes. This would enable those who pilot aircrafts such as SAPD Air One or SAMS Angel One currently. Or fixed-wing aircraft licensed pilots in the planned flight school that is coming up soon, an option for survivability and safety.
So just to clarify here, you're um you're proposing that we have. That a requirement for the flight schools to also have parachutes.
Yes, sir. To bring them into the city just for the preparation of flight school to ensure the safety of pilots. And uh for a potential recreational use as applied by the mayor's office for the Parks and Recreation Department. In conjunction with the Business Revenue Bureau for any enterprises that would allow parachutes with licensed operators.
Well, let's bring us to the council first, any questions from the council members?
I I guess.
You are the instructor, correct Bill?
Yes, I I I am gonna be the one opening the flight school. So I I I do have some questions about. Um ha- have have you taken into consideration? The I guess, you know, whether you wanna mandate the the parachutes or or just make them available in the city? Um and further are you know, who would bear the costs if if the parachutes were mandated? I'm not against them, I just I just want to understand all the all the aspect.
Uh yes, good question, so it's not for personal ownership and use, I think that would be kinda dangerous. And potentially cause issues. Instead, it is supposed to be uh bringing to the federal government and making a law. That it should be mandated that uh companies are supplied with parachutes. Whenever they are involved with flighting business, etc. So that they can be used by those engaging in the service.
Whose responsibility would it be to have a parachute?
It's not preaching.
Available to the pilot of the chartered plane, would it be the company?
I would presume it would be the company that owns the planes that are.
Probably the operator.
Yes.
So the pilot then?
Uh yeah.
No, the uh like like the operating organization.
Yes, the operating organization, yes.
And if there is in in the absence of an operating organization, i.e. like a private. You know, pilot just wants to fly around.
I I mean, can't force people, you can't force people to wear their seatbelt.
Well, no, I'm you don't you don't have to wear this, but I think they should be provided, yeah, that's true. But I think that they should definitely be provided at least.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it should be a law, it shouldn't be, I'm just wondering who's gonna be liable to have this available, alright?
So who gets in trouble if it's not available?
Exactly.
Well, I would say it's being provided by the government to these organizations who are.
Who the who who then make it available to the pilots and the men of people who are on board the aircraft.
Yes.
Do you need to have a parachute for every person?
Well, that's kinda where I'm going, that's the track I'm going down.
Yes.
Apologies to the council, there's been a issue that has arose and I need to attend to immediately.
Alright.
Very well, be safe, sweet prince.
So the issue, I mean, I I don't really have a stance on this yet, but my que- um. From the one hand, it's like, oh, Titanic didn't have enough lifeboat.
Well, this is very different, this is the difference between having no lifeboats and at least having lifeboats in the first place.
I do have a question on uh how you, cuz I you did mention the BRB in there, uh what would our responsibility be um for?
Uh speci- it's not specifically a responsibility, what it says is in addition for specific recreational use. An application can be given to the mayor's art office. Specifically, the Parks and Recreation Department in conjunction with the Business Revenue Bureau. So what that means is if a organization or company would like to request availability of parachutes. To give to civilians for their business, they need to get that approved through the Parks and Recreation Office in conjunction. With the Business Re- Revenue Bureau, since it is a business addition allowing that business to have parachutes.
Okay, and. Saying like a jump school or something like.
Yes, exactly, yes, yeah, precisely, precisely.
So that leads me to a follow-up then, like um let's say a person does come, they wanna do a jump school, right? Um what do you expect uh the bureau when they're applying for this license to scrutinize for? Like I are we supposed to confirm training, are we supposed to confirm?
Well, I would say, oh, hey, it's us, the Vanilla Unicorn, can we get parachutes? No, probably not, hey, it's us, a flight school, can we have parachutes in our business? Well, they're gonna have an aircraft, which means that they should be supplied with parachutes for safety, so yes.
So what you're saying is just the Business Revenue Bureau is just confirming that there's a some sort of flight next to the business.
For it and it's the business is not just trying to get uh parachutes for having parachutes, but for the safety application.
What what if the the Vanilla Unicorn were to open a flight school or a parachute?
Well, I guess in that case, then they have added to their business and therefore it's up to. The Parks and Recreation and uh Bureau of Revenue Bureau. To determine if that is a logical reason to be supplied with parachutes.
Will we, uh you know, nevermind. No, I I what I will. No, yeah, no, nevermind, withdrawn.
Thank you.
Any questions on the uh current bill, please come to the podium and state your name and your question.
Uh hello, my name is Mohammed, um hello, Mr. King, I have a few concerns with this bill to be honest with you. I'm I'm failing to see how, actually, before I proceed, um are you proposing just, I wanna make sure I understand correctly, are you proposing? Uh mandating parachutes for flight students, people are or pilots, student pilots? Or what are are you?
That is up for debate right now.
Yeah, so the idea is more so to bring parachutes into the city in the first place. And set laws that businesses that are involved in flight should at least be given. The opportunity to have parachutes for safety reasons, because they're not currently available in the city.
Okay, when you say have parachutes for safety reasons, I mean, if you're if you're a skydiving school or a jump school. Um I think a parachute is pretty much essential, so it's not for a safety reason, it's more for like you can't do it without the parachute. So that really leaves the flight school, which uh in my opinion, having a parachute. For a uh student pilot is not a safety reason, it's it's the exact opposite, actually, you're training them subconsciously. To ditch their aircraft potentially over a civilian area or a heavily populated area instead of teaching them. To properly uh you know uh try to problem solve un- until you know uh the very end. I don't think we should be giving pilots uh the option to co- basically ditch their aircraft upon their. You know, first issue they face, and instead we should be really focusing more on promoting. Uh you know, proper pre-flight inspections of the aircraft, uh analyzing, you know, the weather uh if possible. Uh you know, do some proper risk management and so on and so forth, but having a parachute is not promoting safety.
Would you not allow seatbelts uh for tr- for for training uh drivers?
I I don't see how that's relevant.
You mean like a seat that pops out when you're driving, that would be a more fair comparison?
Let me let me ask this.
Ask.
Are you going to be satisfied if a pilot has a malfunction? Or some sort of terrible event happens, I mean, flight is scary, it's a scary business, you never know what could go wrong, plane's a very intricate machine. Let's say something happens to that machine and there is nothing that can be done. To salvage that airplane, to be able to get it to land safely. That it is completely, engines are out, it is on fire, something drastic has happened. Or there are passengers on the plane who uh lives will be at risk if the pilot does not properly land the plane. You're saying that you would rather there not be any air air uh parachuting devices there. At all, which is going to guarantee their death, rather than there being parachutes there. To support them as an option to try and help prevent their deaths.
That's correct, uh that's exactly what I'm proposing, be um Mr. King, when a pilot signs up for, you know, going out on a flight. They know exactly the risk that they're taking, I think, and I this is my personal belief, it is the pilot's responsibility. To ensure that you know uh to minimize uh the potential damage by ensuring that they continue to troubleshoot. Until the very last second, it is their responsibility to ensure that the aircraft does not hit a heavily populated, you know, city. I mean, what you're proposing is basically saying, well, the pilot can save himself, but then the aircraft can crash into PDM and then we lose like ten more people.
Well, I would presume, like you said, that an.
There's a lot of considerations that go into flight, you know, how how to abandon an aircraft and and a number of other things. That you know, that go into pilot training on how you know, you could how to bail out of an aircraft without, you know, turning it into a missile.
Uh no, I agree, a hundred percent.
Fair to make the assumption that part of your pilot classes and schools, really, would be training of. An instance to that, to not have collateral damage during any.
Yes, how to bail out is part is one of the lessons.
I mean, look, if you're gonna give them that lesson, um sure, but I believe that, you know, under that amount of pressure when your engine isn't operating as necessary. You you know, what are you gonna do if that pilot decides, okay, well, you know, excuse my language, but you know, fuck this, opens the door, jumps out of the airplane and then, you know. You know, maybe they're flying over, you know, south side of Spoochy and then.
Then clearly, that pilot regardless of if there was parachutes or not, would be held responsible for that horrible decision.
Well, if they if if they don't have a parachute, then they're they have no other option but to continue to at least steer the aircraft away from. You know, a heavily populated area. I I I think that.
We are gonna be screening, we are gonna be screening people.
If an individual took it into their own hands to just jump out of an airplane. Over the city and crash the airplane into a bunch of buildings, I think that. The parachute, they would have been capable of making such a terrible decision. The parachute gives them the option to take their life into their own hands and bail hopefully over a safe location. Where the plane will not cause issues like the ocean, which we're heavily surrounded by, and it will save the life of that pilot. And because they had that second option, potentially alleviate the risk of them trying to land a crashing plane. Anywhere near the city and bail it into somewhere like the ocean, because now they know they will survive.
Also, for the record, the students won't be allowed anywhere near the city until they're fully licensed.
Okay, um you know, that's perfectly fine, um it's honestly being a student or not is uh irrelevant in my opinion. I think in my personal opinion, the flight school should be heavily focusing on teaching how to do a proper pre-flight inspection and you know. Uh proper preparation for the flight instead of, you know, telling the pilot, you you know, in case things go south and you give up, here's a parachute. And you know, screw everybody on the ground. Um that's the way I'm looking at it, and regardless of whether a student or not, we're at the end of the day, we're all humans. And uh we're gonna always prioritize ourselves over others when it comes to life and death, that's just human nature.
I believe the firefighters here would disagree with that.
Well, I'm a firefighter myself, yeah, and I've been injured in the fire, you know, not even a few days ago, but I'm I understand what you're saying. But uh not everybody here is a firefighter or a, you know, emergency services where, anyway, it's I don't wanna go too far off topic. And I think what I'm trying to say is, you know, giving the pilots an option to bail is going to cause more casualties than. Uh lives saved in my personal opinion, the pilots know the risk that they're signing up for when they decide to get into that airplane. And instead of giving them a bailout option, we should be teaching them, hey, learn how to make sure that the aircraft is safe to operate. Before you take it up in the air, instead of telling them, okay, well, you know, if anything happens, you can jump out now and you'll be fine.
Well, I don't think that.
These are mutually exclusive, I think both can happen at the same time, I think that uh through the pilot's schooling. They're gonna be dealing with that very thing with pre-flight inspections, um.
When to bail, when not to bail.
Yeah, maintenance records and all of that, what where the disconnect is, it doesn't need to be either or, it could be both. Those things can still happen and still have a parachute, an egress route of a uh out of a uh bad situation in an aircraft.
Okay, um yeah, no, I think I've taken enough time, yeah, go ahead.
Titanic at least had the option for escape, and I think that that's valuable for these aircrafters.
That which is fair enough, you know, um I I think I've taken enough time on the podium, I know there are a few people behind me, but uh I appreciate your time, I just wanted to voice my concerns. And you know, if any terrible accidents happen, Mr. King, I will not be blaming you and I'm not gonna say I told you so, okay?
I can't wait for that to happen.
I love you, Mr. King, okay, thank you for your time.
Hello, uh there's a bit of a problem with the wording in this, uh I'm looking at the, you're talking about the parachuting for airplanes and skydiving. But like, my company, for instance, is like Wacky Races, which is, you know, hopefully would hopefully have airplanes eventually, but. What about if uh for instance, someone wants to be using it for like my company for like base jumping?
Oh, that was included here, for recreational use is also included here, for businesses that are going to be using parachutes. For recreational activities, which I think would be a great tourist attraction.
Okay, yeah, that'd be cool, my my concern was was just like the wording of it only being for planes.
Here, let me let me uh reread this one part. Oh, sorry, I got excited, sorry about that. Okay, ahem, where is it, let's see, ba 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 ba. In addition for specific recreation use, an application to the mayor's office specifically Parks and Recreation Department in conjunction with. Business Revenue Bureau for any enterprises would allow use of parachutes. for any enterprises would allow use of parachutes with licensed operators. So you do not specifically have to have a plane, base jumping, I would say, would be involved in that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you for your question. Hello?
Hi, I'm Niall.
Yes, hello.
Uh, just to clarify, so does that mean that any commercial aircraft has to have everybody on board with a, a parachute?
That's not necessarily what this act is about. The act is more about just getting parachutes in the city and making sure that they're available for use before flight schools open.
It sounded to me like you were trying to, uh, like, you were basically, like you were saying earlier, that you were forcing them to use it.
No, I'm not forcing anyone to do anything, that's not what the bill is about, that's something we discussed and it's something we'll probably discuss further. The bill itself is just to make sure that parachutes can be provided for the safety of civilians.
So just as an option, then?
Yes.
Hey.
Hello, Mr. Rooster. I, I can't hear you, sir.
You're gonna have to speak up about like a million times.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Is this microphone working?
Yes, your voice is-
Testing, one, two, three.
Yep.
Te- testing, one, two, three.
It's in my ears.
Testing.
Try one more time.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Yep, good, great.
All right, so the one thing I did hear, this is, this is actual question matter, and I don't know if a lot of people thought about this. The parachutes are for recreational activities, is that what this act, uh, goes down to?
No, it goes down to getting parachutes in the first place, for both safety and recreational use.
Can, can we also talk about that with the window washing, would that be included? I've known, uh, myself has slipped off that guardrail, I know a few people slipped off that guardrail, would that be something beneficial?
That's something that, uh, the bill is kinda trying to address, is safety about those sorts of situations.
Would there be enough time for that parachute to?
I guess, suppose that depends on, uh, where the window washing is taking place, if it's on like a twenty billion story building, perhaps.
All right, cool, just wanted to make sure, you know, thinking about the safety of all the citizens.
Yep, same, thank you, sir.
Yeah, it seems to me like a lanyard would be, make more sense, than tie them to the-
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, maybe we should get lanyards.
Uh, go ahead, start your floor.
Hello, uh, uh, my question is specifically about how you would go about providing these parachutes? Would they come standard equipped in the aircraft themselves, or, uh?
The plan was to provide them to businesses and companies that have flight and recreational- Yes. So available to be provided to individuals by the school and by, uh, recreational companies.
Right, uh, my, my question still stands, though, uh, how would they go, how would these businesses go about distributing parachutes to those who might need them?
Well, they would have them and they could give them to individuals that require them during the activities. So they'd have them stored somewhere and can provide you.
Okay, thank you, that, that answers my question.
Yeah, I think it falls back to what Billy, well, and you were saying about, about the, the onus of who would be responsible for that, the operator responsible for containing enough parachutes in said storage for, let's say it's class of jumpers, you know, something like that. All right, any more questions from the public? All right, back to the council, out of the council, I don't know if I've asked you guys already, if you have any questions on this, we need this to, to see if we can go out.
I mean, just for the last moment of clarification, 'cause I know everyone's a little confused, this is just about procurement, right?
Yes, sir.
We're just trying to sell, okay, all right.
Specifically distribution and procurement.
Love that, okay.
This isn't addressing any further issues, it's just to get the ball rolling.
Gotcha.
For safety purposes.
And due to the conversation we've had with the public, and, uh, council will definitely need to iron that out further.
I agree. Yes, hello, sir.
Uh, I'm Niall.
Yep, hello.
I just had one question for Mr. Bobbin.
Yeah, go ahead.
What year did that happen to Abbas Infernum, Furnas?
Let me check my notes here. Sorry.
Was it eight, eight-five-two? Was that, sorry?
Are you talking about Armin Furman?
Abbas Ib- Furnas?
Uh, Armin Furman is the individual in eight-hundred-and-fifty-two in, uh, Coroba, Spain, who I spoke about.
Eighty.
Yep, no problem.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes, uh, Cleos and Claire, woman of many hats, I actually wanted to inquire about a bill that was proposed at last week's city council meeting for, I believe it was specifically for, uh, the BRB regarding regulating and, uh, oversight over shop prices, specifically targeting pawn shop prices on repair kits. I was wondering if there's been any movement on that front.
Um, we'll address that after we get through these, uh, these votes, um, we'll open-
All right.
We'll discuss more of what, uh, past we-
Sounds good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Just wanna know where the, when the auction is, 'cause if I have to listen to anyone talk about planes, I'm gonna shoot myself.
Yeah, you got a while to go.
Oh, God!
Yeah, you shouldn't have a gun on you right now.
I don't have a gun, I'm just saying.
Yeah, it'll be after city council. All right, moving the questions back to the council, any questions on this bill? All right, so just to be clear, this is just about the distribution and procurement of the parachutes, not the distribution and requirements for schooling and said businesses said after. All right, does the council feel like they have enough information to vote on this procurement act?
Yes.
All right, let's go move it.
Yeah, yeah, sir.
All right, those all in favor of the act, raise your hand. I'm counting one, two, three, four, five, five in favor. I'm gonna vote for it as well, so eight, and then I see, is that eight to one, actually, you were voting eight?
Yeah.
All right, let's record show it passes, the vote of eight to one. Right, just Bobbin, um, you have one more, is that correct?
Uh, yes, one more.
All right.
Okay, the last one. Last one was the, uh, tabled vote of no confidence for Billy Falco.
Okay, let's, let's hold on to this table, that, to the end of the voting, for the rest of the council members, and then we'll discuss that, 'cause that's gonna be a question amongst us.
Very well.
Oh, only temporarily tabling that, so we're definitely the first of the council.
Captain?
Uh, Mr. Winters, do you have any bills or you wanna speak about your work, some congratulations on being seated today?
Uh, thank you, uh, no, I don't have anything to present tonight.
Newest, uh, one of our newest, uh, councilwomen, uh, doctor, do you have any? All right, congratulations.
What'd she say?
Mr. Rose.
Oh, God, yeah, how you, how you doing? Uh, no, I, I don't have anything besides a headache.
Hopefully that gets a little better.
Well, I'll help that out, just get a parachute, I think that'll clear it up.
I agree.
It should, it should, yeah.
All right, so let's go back to the tabled topic of Billy Falco's governor of confidence impeachment. Um, Bobbin, do you wanna state your case again?
All right, yep, sure, let me go ahead and reread. Impeachment request and vote of no confidence for Billy Falco. Billy Falco called in a legal meeting, wasting ample amounts of public and government resources for his own attempted nefarious gains. Billy Falco has time and time again proven that he's not actually the voice of small business that he claims to be by leaving them out of his own lawmaking decisions. Billy Falco has raised an idea for a very dangerous militia and a variety of other harmful ideas that were never in the best interest for the city because of this blatant lawbreaking, I guess it was two weeks ago now, his radical ideology and his interest in himself rather than the city, I called for impeachment and vote of no confidence.
For the record, we actually did start a small business council, uh, keep, keep an eye out for posters, this should be-
Oh, do you wanna, do you wanna rebut that, you wanna give comments on that bill? I mean, I know you-
Door!
Comment now.
We, we, we did actually, um, uh, you know, I did actually offer, uh, uh, some rebuttals last week, but however, I, you know, I will simply add that, um, you know, I, I feel that this isn't really appropriate, and, and, you know, Bobbin, you know, we, we, I tried to speak with you uh, this week, but, you know, we weren't able to connect before this meeting, um, yeah, I mean, I, 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 I stand by what I said in terms of, I, I do keep small businesses at the heart of, you know, what I do. Uh, you know, in speaking with people, I did find, you know, I did hear that the perception of, you know, of the meeting that I call could have seen, been seen as self-serving. Even though it wasn't, perception is important, so I, you know, I have certainly kept that in mind and will ensure perception is, better guides my actions as well. And I apologize.
Very well. Does any of the council members have any comments on the impeachment or voter no confidence of Mr. Falco?
I just have one statement, uh, briefly, this is, uh, it sounds like Mr. Falco had his, uh, heart possibly in the, in the right place. Um, he just went about it in a very, um, ham-fisted manner. Um, so I, 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 I will go voting, not, not to impeach, uh.
What is this, uh, council that you said that you've put together? This small business council?
It's an independent, um, non-government body that literally will just get together and talk about issues with small businesses. The first meeting is gonna have speakers from the Business Revenue Bureau, who are gonna talk about navigating the regulatory environment. And, by the way, actually, we're volunteering you guys for that. Um, and yeah, the goal, the goal is essentially to, to, to give the small businesses a voice and, and then, you know, that, that voice can then, you know, have lobbying power, essentially.
Um, I'm gonna move the questions to the public before I make my statement on it, and then before we, uh, with however decided. So I'm gonna open it up to the public, for those that do know about this, or don't, if you want to make comments.
The worst party in the world.
Hey, how you guys doing? Abdullah Washington, owner, operator of Wild Card Gym, as well as San Andreas Championship Wrestling, how you guys doing today?
Great now that you're here, sir.
I hear that all the time, anyways, so my concern for me personally is, I, I would like to see legislation passed for business owners to stand on their business and protect themselves from no-good doers, uh, misfits, bad people who constantly come in and cause harm to business owners and those people around them. I don't know if you have heard, but my gym has been a target of a number of individual attacks, such as stabbing, shootings, ransacking, you know, stealing money from the drawer, stealing my fucking wrestling tapes, who steals another fucking man's wrestling fucking tapes? A man that don't believe, don't believe that, that, sorry, getting ahead of myself here. My point is, the times where I have chosen to defend myself, where I thought my life was being threatened, where I thought my business was being threatened, I was the one who ended up in cuffs. And it seems like only criminals have recourse for these types of situations, so I wanna know what can you do for the business owners to ensure that we are able to protect ourselves from danger?
I believe the answer to that is a robust shopkeeper's privilege law.
Yeah. You should be on city council.
Which allows shopkeepers ample leeway to protect their businesses and, and have, and, uh, in time for, you know, law enforcement to arrive. Um, and to do, you know, to, and I think that may be the, like, a good approach. We, you know, we'll have to talk it out a bit, because shopkeeper's privilege can be a little controversial, but it's, I think that may be a solution to, to what you're asking about.
I, I simply believe if I feel like my danger or my employee's life is in danger, I should be able to neutralize the threat in that moment.
I don't have the constitution on me right now, but I-
The constitution states that self-defense does not, not allow the defense of property.
That's what I was about to say, yeah, property does not apply. For deadly force, that's-
If, if deadly force is presenting itself towards me, I should, no, yeah, I agree, I, I should be able to, to, to meet at that level. If, if deadly force or the, the presentation of such as being, you know, thrusted towards me, I should be able to escalate or, you know, bring myself up to that level. Otherwise, I'm gonna be the one who's taking a fucking shotgun shell in the back of the sternum.
Well, that's just, that's just what we're getting at, is if, if you feel like your life is, is in danger, you have every right to defend yourself.
Bitch!
It is that if, if it's just against property, someone is stealing property, you're not allowed to use deadly force for that. And that's what Billy was beside, uh, pointing to in the constitution, which I, I should, which I don't have on me, but I do remember that situation.
Okay, yeah, we agree.
My thought is, if we do this, uh, this ownership, the shop ownership act, it would have to be written in such a way that liability would not fall on the shop owner for protecting his property. But currently, as it stands in the constitution, it's not accounted for. All right, it counts for it, but does not give you, uh, leniency when using deadly force.
How about situations where I'm not using deadly force, but, you know, situation leads to another and potentially that person passes away?
So, Mr. Doob, the, what you're discussing here is a very important topic, um-
This is a different issue than what was brought up, I believe.
However, as, uh, Mr. Bobbin points out, yeah, this is a different issue, we will be more than happy to discuss this with you after we, uh, handle the matter at hand.
Yeah, we'll open the, what we'll do is open the floor back up, uh, back up for it. As it stands right now, we have to do, to answer your question in a short manner, there would have to be amendments to the constitution. I ran into the penal code that would allow for a castle doctrine to include property.
Okay, yeah, no further questions.
Getting back to the topic at hand, um, Mr. Falco, I had a few questions for you, um, Madeline Middleton, of course, um, BRB. Um, so with this business, uh, small business thing that you're creating here, um, when did you intend to tell the business bureau that you were inviting them to, volun- telling them, sorry, um, that they're gonna be hosting this meeting of yours?
At this meeting?
Okay, uh, should you not have waited to put that on your poster of advertising to speak with us personally?
Perhaps.
Okay.
I'll take another advise.
Fantastic, second thing, uh, should you not put a date, uh, on your poster for when those things are happening so people can better sort themselves, instead of, hey, contact this PO with no other conver- uh, context?
I will certainly take another advise.
Yeah, you should, uh, okay, thank you.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, it's, uh, once again, since it's off the subject, uh, I'm gonna do, uh, not make a comment, but, uh, after, after you've gone through everything, then I will speak on the Business Association, Business Council.
All right, so back to the, back to the, uh, issue.
Bethany, sit down.
My personal opinion is, um-
Hi!
While it was incorrect of you to call a emergency meeting twenty-four hours, I definitely support the century for that, and make an official statement saying that all emergency meetings need to carry the same guidelines, and maybe we even need to be more explicit about those guidelines for hours, to call in all the council members for that. Uh, so I do support that part of the impeachment slash voter no confidence. I will, um- I will, um, piggyback off of Councilmember Williams's statement saying that while the, the procedures were not No! to a T, which should garner some type of stern punishment to, uh, I think Billy's heart was in the right spot, uh, just procedurally it was out of place. So with that, I would be behind putting a motion to censure, but not a motion for a vote of no confidence.
I would argue that if one's heart is in the right place consistently, though what comes from your heart being in the right place is not positive, that perhaps there is a disconnection between where the heart is and where the logic stands. I wouldn't say that having your heart in the right place is a automatic white flag to be, uh, given freedom from one's own actions.
Oh, I completely concur and I'm, I'm, I'm also combining this with his actions, whether he should have added as Madeline, Miss Madeline, uh, Middleton said
Hi!
See you.
Communication.
See you looking at me.
Well, I, I, yeah, I also agree that what Mrs. Middleton brings up is a continued example of further reciprocation of what the issue is in the first place, which has been perpetuated into this week, not even previous accounts.
I don't hear you.
Alright, sir.
So, this issue, I believe, is continuing based off of what Mrs. Middleton has had. And the fact that, uh, my fellow counselor, Mr. Williams, had absolutely no idea about what he was talking about here a moment ago, which was the issue at that previous illegal meeting as well.
I want to annihilate your whole soul!
Ah!
Can people stop, please stop talking?
Loser, they're talking about you.
Conversations, please exit while we have this conversation so everybody else can hear. If you have something to say there.
Yeah, the Robert Daynop, deputy mayor and businessman, um, Mr. Boblin, my, I feel like I, the only reason I'm speaking now is because, uh, I can add some context to this entire thing. Um, at the last council meeting, uh, Mr. Falco, uh, made a mention that he would like to start a business council, which I immediately jumped on because I am one hundred percent behind it. Um, I, I want all the businesses in the city to flourish, including mine. So I talked to him and, uh, offered him my vacant building for use as a meeting place, um, so we can facilitate this. Um, our vision, even though not, uh, specified on the flyer, is much more wide-ranging than just, uh, legislative, uh, clout. Uh, it's more along the lines also of not only, uh, helping businesses in general, uh, but helping businesses individually with individual problems they might be having with their business. Uh, working together as a team to make all the businesses successful. Um, I talked to Dale about this, um, which is why Mr. Falco probably assumed that the business bureau would be involved. And the, what I put to Dale was that, uh, the business community kind of sees the business bureau as an adversary. And Dale actually talked to me and told me exactly what the original aim of the business bureau and how the, they wanted to use the business bureau to help the businesses. And I said to Dale, I said, well, this is a perfect way for you to come and tell the, all the businesses exactly what you told me and how the business bureau can help the businesses. And he said, I'd be there. He'd be there. So I said that to, to Mr. Falco, so he probably assumed that the business bureau was automatically on board with that.
He probably assumed that the business
If Mr. Falco is on a business council, wouldn't that be a potential conflict of interest for being on city council?
Not, not at all.
He's a businessman, uh, he's a businessman.
Talking, I, I have a big question. They're everywhere. Just when they're, just when they're, just when they're
What, a business association?
You, you can be one of them.
It's, it's a private entity.
What of what?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
No, but I'm talking to the deputy mayor now. Deputy mayor works with you, correct?
Yeah, honestly, like I said, I was looking at it from my, a business angle. I didn't think this was a city hall, uh, issue.
Well, I think that this idea, go ahead.
Be a peasant then.
No, I mean, I mean, it, obviously it spilled into city hall. Here we are discussing it in the hall meeting.
This is part of the problem. Well, I believe that Mr. Falco has wonderful intentions. I think that previous bills that he has attempted to pass and this as another example of what was a previous example two weeks ago makes me concerned for his ability to serve the people, which is the purpose of every member of the city council.
I, 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 I'd have to disagree with that. I mean, you know, but my, my objectives have, have always been very clear, you know, and, you know, small business has always been my focus.
Okay.
Oh, words say one thing and actions say another is how I feel.
Uh, uh, before you speak, are you intending to rehash any of the, the things that were brought up in the last two meetings?
Uh, no, Dale Braithwaite, Assistant Director, Business Revenue Bureau. We've had two meetings so far regarding this. Um, and I just wanted to point out, you would not expect someone to attend an event without knowing if they were available, when that event is, or, you know, you wouldn't
That's why there's no date on the, on the poster.
Yes. And I think the point was raised about you would make contact. It, it just screams disorganization, uh, to, to myself.
Well, the question, the question
It's also not relevant.
The question has to be asked, is his actions in good faith or in bad faith, right? Because we can sit here and say, well, there's mistakes made with, you know, no time, no addicts, that's all that just, what the, the, the crux of this whole discussion is this, if he's capable, is his mind in the right spot? Is his intentions right? Those are the questions to be asked. Not necessarily if things were left out or people weren't talking. Granted, I'm, you know, I have to look at my own procedures and why I wasn't informed about the situation
I think continuous inconsistencies is an issue.
I agree.
Which is exactly what Mr. Falco was complaining about at his illegal emergency meeting that he's perpetuating himself.
Shows a pattern.
And I, and I agree, but is it, was it done with ill intention, right?
Does it matter if it was done in ill intention? I think that to a degree, yes, but I think that if it's so consistent that it is causing a detriment
I make a motion for a vote.
Do you want a motion for a vote?
Fuck you.
Just, just to, yeah, just to, just to, yeah, just to, to end the debate and to just get down to business. Because nobody here wants to listen to this anymore either. It's like the third meeting.
It has gone on for quite some time, but maybe we should get a professional to assess Mr. Falco, because we're talking about intent.
Mr. Bray, are you, are you speaking as a government official or as an individual with, with a, with a vendetta against?
Let's bring this back
Ha ha!
to the actual motion that was presented by the council member. Alright, who said something funny? So, want to move this to, because I, I just don't, you know,
Um?
Turn him off to go see somebody, go talk to some, that's not what the question here is. Question is,
Hmm?
Do we have confidence?
I, I think this needs to be put to an end. I agree.
So, that's what
Do you believe in God?
Second for the vote.
Alright, and the vote should be ordered.
I don't, I don't read fiction books.
On the issue of a vote of no confidence
The priest I met, he believes in God and he told me I should be believing God.
I see one vote for a vote of no confidence.
You're just jealous because Jesus phoned me and he refused to see you.
Nay.
No, Billy, your vote doesn't count, but
The constitution doesn't, doesn't forbid it.
It, it does, it does.
Um, so, I have three votes for nay.
I think you know for speaking.
Um, I mean, I'm gonna sit this vote out so we even vote on this.
I don't even go to university because I forget.
The motion of vote of no confidence is failed. Um, I move to a vote of censure, censure, officially censure him for his actions. Uh, does anyone second that motion?
Second, yeah, third.
So for the vote of censuring, uh, Billy officially for, uh, the twenty-four hour, uh, requirements for the the meeting and say, set steps for, I don't know, advertising, or advertising new bureau or the new group that you put together. Um, all those fair votes, uh, raise your hand.
I, just very, very quickly, the, if, if I may, the, the, again, the entity that was the, 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 the business council is a private entity that, that shouldn't be relevant here. Just the, the calling of the less than twenty-four hours should be at topic for censure.
Alright, noted. Alright, so the vote for censorship has passed, I think it was four, four votes? But yes and a nine vote as well. So, uh, the record showed that Billy has been censured for his actions on the twenty-four hour meeting requirements. Um, and the vote for no confidence is failed. I hope that we can move past this and the procedures and requirements for the, for the meeting will, uh, be planted in all of our heads and then
Should we be, sir?
You should cut up and
Yeah!
I, I, I do.
Can, can I, Stacey Ricky here, is my mic working?
One, one more time.
Test, testing, one, two, three, testing.
Alright, can you do it one more time, sir?
Testing, one, two, three, testing.
We can hear you, sir.
Alright, quick, quick question before, you know, all this is said and done. Uh, Falco, one question for you. Did you get any responses about the business?
Uh, I have not checked my mail yet. I just came right here from, from
Alright, good to know.
Yep.
So, given that all the issues in the court of council are completed, want to open up the floor to the people. If you guys have any comments on anything, questions on, including the discussions that we have currently.
Sorry.
Please feel free to come to the podium and state your issues of complaints.
What?
Hey, just something, uh, real quick here. Jesse Holiday, I'd like to address the, uh, speed limit signs. Don't really reflect the, uh, speed limits issued in the constitution. This might have been addressed already earlier, a couple of weeks back or something like that, but, uh, if we could update the, uh, speed limit signs on the sides of the road to reflect constitutional speed limits in certain areas like Blen County and the city and the highway, that'd be real nice. That's all. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, sweet prince.
You are practically laying on my legs, sir.
I brought up a problem, I'm bringing up a story, I feel like to protect us, uh, all government workers and stuff like that because I feel like there should be a little bit more harsher punishment for, uh, you know, maybe criminals and stuff when, uh, you know, that, uh, you know, hurting people. Not even just government workers, but, you know, civilians that are visiting
Ask what?
Certain, uh, places like the hospital, the police stations, the city halls, you know. Lately, we've got a lot of, uh, you know, um, criminals that are, you know, just, you know, going
That's not a question. Tell them about the, go and tell them about the goblins. It's not okay. I can like decide that for myself. Go and tell them about the goblins. What?
Shut the fuck up, please.
About work and, you know, civilians are feeling unsafe out, out in front of the hospital, you know, after getting treated and stuff, you know, I, I just wondered if there was anything maybe the council would think about about doing this.
Um, yeah, it's definitely something that we definitely should take up.
That's definitely something that I'm most definitely planning on addressing, for sure.
Alright, Doc, do you want to lead the charge on that, full legislation and talk to the constituents about that?
Absolutely.
Awesome, appreciate that, Doc. Alright, so the doctor will, uh, take a look at that and present it to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time. Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Dylan, my name is Stella Milano. Uh, I am a secretary over at WW Professional Security. I'm just piggybacking off of, uh, her concerns about security as well as Abdullah, uh, in requesting some sort of way to detain criminals, uh, maybe zip tie something, uh, to detain somebody. You know, we, obviously we don't want to hurt anyone, making sure that the, but we do need a way to detain someone if the, you know, acting up and, and, you know, waiting for the police to come down, you know, and we want to make sure that everyone's safe, but we don't want them to get away, uh, maybe something like zip ties or some sort of, uh, non-lethal way. Uh, and I think it would make our job a lot more effective. I think it would make the job of, uh, the security working here and also at, you know, the hospitals. I think it would just make everyone a lot safer.
I, I completely concur. Someone that has been fighting and fighting for security even to the hall to have the ability to detain, um, is a very useful tool in the toolbox of, 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 uh, people that were sworn to protect. In your case, a private entity that is sworn to protect. Have you spoken to PD about this issue?
Uh, I personally have not spoken to anyone. This is just something that I've been speaking to, uh, the owner, Wyatt, about. Uh, and as far as we know that they don't, we're, we're not going to be given handcuffs or nothing, so.
Um, normally in this case, I would direct you to Mr. Caputo as the Attorney General, but he is not here right now. Um, do you have the AG's contact information?
Uh, we have not. I, I don't know if they've been contacted yet. This is just something that I thought would be nice to be brought to the city for not just our company, but also for, you know, with city hall security, for the security at the hospital, for private security, you know, working at businesses that are not affiliated with us, you know, like, you know, just in general.
Okay. Well, this is an issue that City Hall is currently involved in with its own security. So what I'm going to do is I'll get your contact information, pass your information on with, to the AG and, uh, we can get a better clarification on
What? I thought you were gonna, they don't
Okay.
Sound good?
Bethany's on track. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for sharing. Alright, does anyone else have any questions, statements? No? Do any council members have any other statements they'd like to make to the people?
Uh, nope.
Alright, considering it is getting late, uh, I'm gonna go and adjourn this meeting. Alright, be in adjourned, thank you everyone.
Auctions, auction information, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that and, uh,
Oh, thank Jesus.
Uh, I don't know, give, give me five minutes alone of God.
Yeah, I am.
Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
One more time, one more time, one more time.
Um, I'm looking forward.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Hey, you're the one about the small business council, right?
Yeah.
For this auction, you want to talk?
Sure.